Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Muskegon City Commission Meeting for March 26, 2013. Before we proceed, I'll ask Pastor Tim Cross of Living Word Church to lead us in short prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor?
Pastor, bow your heads with me, please. Heavenly Father, we just come into this season recognizing that this is the Passion Week, the week that Jesus Christ rode into Jerusalem and some 2,000 years ago paid the price for our sins so that we could be forgiven. He shed His blood so that our consciousness can be cleansed from dead works so that we could serve the living God, that by making Him the Lord of our lives, inviting Him into our hearts and our lives, He can cleanse us from guilt and shame and from sins and the wrongdoings of our life and give us a new life. Father, I pray that just as we remember that through this week, we would remember His sacrifice, the giving of His life and sacrificing for others, and that that might permeate our community, that, Father, that we would recognize to really enjoy life is to give our lives, to give our abilities, our talents, our time, our energy to others and bless them. Father, I ask that you would bless this City Commission today. You would bless them with wisdom and the decisions that they need to make, the directions that they need to go. Bless our city officials, our police officers, our public safety officers, those that as well serve in this community, the Public Works Officers, those that serve here in the City Hall. We just ask that you bless them, especially in this season. Bless them with your peace and your grace, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Hood?
Here.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Here.
Commissioner German?
Here.
Commissioner Wieringo?
Yes, I'm here.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Here.
Commissioner Markowski?
Here.
Mayor Galvin?
Here.
Thank you. May we have the consent agenda?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk, summary request to approve minutes for the March 11th Commission of West Side Meeting and the March 12th City Commission Meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. 2013 dozer rental for beach leveling at Pier Marquette Park, Public Works, summary request. Staff is requesting permission to enter into a rental agreement with Michigan CAT for a CAT D6TXL cab dozer for leveling sand at Pier Marquette Beach. Staff recommendation, approve request. One-year janitorial services extension, optional year through April 30, 2014, Engineering, summary request. Extend the current janitorial services contract with reliant professional cleaning for one more year, which was allowed for as an optional year at the time the contract was bid back in 2010 to clean City Hall, Public Service Building, and the filtration plant with no change in the cost. The contractor has submitted the request for exercising the optional year extension and staff recommends it. Staff recommendation, approve the one-year extension, optional year, with reliant professional cleaning services to provide janitorial services until the end of April 2014 at City Hall, DPW, and Filtration. City MDOT agreement for the reconstruction of Lake Ten Avenue from Wood Street to Getty, Engineering, summary request. Approve the contract with MDOT for the reconstruction of Lake Ten Avenue between Wood and Getty and approve the resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign the contract. Staff recommendation, approve the contract and resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign both. Liquor license request, Pigeon Hill Brewing Company, LLC, 500 West Western, City Clerk, summary request. The Liquor Control Commission is seeking local recommendation on a request from Pigeon Hill Brewing Company, LLC, for a new microbrewer license with dance and entertainment permits to be located at 500 West Western Avenue, number one. Staff recommendation, all departments are recommending approval. Amendment to the zoning ordinance, planning economic development, summary request. Staff initiated request to amend Section 2326 off-street parking and loading of the zoning ordinance to lessen the off-street parking requirements for existing buildings. Staff recommendation, to approve the zoning ordinance amendment. Committee recommendation, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the request at their March 14 meeting. Detective vehicles, Public Works, summary request. Authorize staff to purchase one Chevy Malibu from Shaheen Chevrolet, the Michigan dealer, state-contract-awarded dealership for Chevy, and one Ford Fusion from Gornow Ford, the Michigan deal, state-contract-awarded Ford. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to purchase new detective vehicles from Shaheen Chevrolet and Gornow Ford. Acceptance of viridians and terrorist points extensions into the city street system, Engineering, summary request. Adopt the revision stepping extensions of viridian and terrorist points drive into the city street system. Staff recommendation, adopt the resolution. Permission to donate a retired police cruiser to Muskegon Area Career Tech Center, Public Works. Summary request, authorize staff to donate a retired police cruiser valued at approximately $3,500 to MACTC for their training program. The city's donation, if approved, would be consistent with two of the city's goals: foster opportunities for city-community youth, foster strong ties among governments and community agencies. Staff recommendation, both DPW and the Police Department are recommending this donation. Grand trunk launch ramp dredging, City Manager, summary request. To approve entering into an agreement with the Department of Natural Resources for funding to dredge the channel used for the grand trunk launch ramp. Also to authorize waiving bidding requirements and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute a dredging contract that is in the best interest of the city. Staff recommendation, to enter into grant agreements with the Department of Natural Resources to secure funding for dredging of the channel used for the grand trunk launch ramp. Further, to waive any bidding requirements and formalities and authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into necessary dredge contracts as deemed in the best interest by the City Manager and City Attorney.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any items on it that you would like to have removed for further discussion? Commissioner Turnquist?
I would like to discuss item G.
Item G. Are there any other items? If not, I entertain a motion for acceptance.
I'll move.
It's been moved by Commissioner Wieringo, seconded by Commissioner Hood to accept the consent agenda as presented minus item G. Any discussion? Not roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Want to make the motion, Commissioner?
Yeah, I don't know if this is right. I see Michigan contracting, and I don't know how.
We have to have a motion first before we discuss it.
I move that we purchase the Chevy Malibu from Benton Chevrolet and the Ford Fusion from Great Lakes Ford.
Second. Okay. It has been moved by Commissioner Turnquist before we go.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's not what was recommended. Those aren't the low bids, and in one case, that's not an in-town vendor. Great Lakes Ford is not in the city limits, so we do have a local preference policy that says 1% or $1,500, whichever is less, and we have followed that for a number of years now, and I don't believe that the Benton Chevrolet falls into that category, but even if we have that discussion, Muskegon is Muskegon. It's not the township or other local units of government within the county. Thank you.
Where is he saying?
Well, the motion that was just made was for the Chevrolet to be purchased from Benton Chevrolet and the Ford to be purchased from Great Lakes Ford. That's not what was recommended by staff as the low bids.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry, I was not aware. Should we go down?
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner?
My reasoning for this, I watch these things, and we're sending the check to Lansing, and we're going to send the check to Downriver on the east side of the state. The Chevrolet one is in the city of Muskegon. I know that Great Lakes is in Muskegon Township, does not pay any taxes to us or anything like that. With the 1% factor, Benton Chevrolet is $396 outside the range where we might consider them. The Great Lakes Ford is $275 outside the range, but I really feel strongly about Benton Chevrolet, the investment that they have made in our city, and we can't buy a vehicle. It's not going to make their season or one way or the other, but it's just a part of this community thing that we've heard so much about, listening to the farmers' market discussion, and I think that we need to be community and do whatever we can, and if we have the ability, especially with the Benton Chevrolet, I think that Malibu should be purchased from them.
I agree.
Commissioner or Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I mean, that's why I think it's important to have these things on the table before we take action. I would certainly perhaps be willing to split these two as separate items, but I would point out that as a matter of community, and I don't know if Kathy Rubaker Clark's here tonight or not, but we did provide quite a bit of assistance to Benton in order for them to stay in the town and to make the investments that they did, so, you know, I understand where you're coming from. The danger is, is that why would you bid on a contract if you know that that local unit is not ever going to take it if there's a local bidder, which pushes our costs up, which means our taxpayers get less value for their tax dollars. And the other thing is, as most of our local vendors will tell you, is that they would starve to death on bidding if they were reliant solely on the city of Muskegon. And we have run into situations where it has become tit-for-tat, where communities that have said strongly, "We're going to go with local preference regardless of cost," not only do they lose their outside bidders and have higher costs as a result, but in some instances, their local businesses have suffered because neighboring communities have not been willing to entertain bids from their neighboring community. So I do think we need to tread lightly on this. It's not a decision to make without, I think, some due deliberation.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other input? Commissioner?
I'd be more than willing to take Great Lakes Ford off of there, realizing that they're not a part of the city, and yes, we make concessions to a number of people who come in here and put up buildings and hire people, but I think that for $396 on a vehicle, that we could make this exception. I realize I've watched the other bidding, and they haven't been this close. This is very, very close to the 1%, and I think it'd be goodwill on our part to do it.
Commissioner?
I agree.
I'm more than willing to remove Great Lakes Ford. That was, came in secondary, just keeping the money on this side of the state, and I have no problem with that, but I really think we should deal with Benton.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I would just point out, according to the paperwork I'm looking at, the difference between Benton and Shaheen is just shy of $600. It's.
If you use the 1% factor, it goes down to $400.
Right, but I'm saying that we would be paying roughly $600 more to do this. So the $600 is, given the size of the bid, you know, if this was a multi-hundred-thousand-dollar bid, a 1% is quite a bit of more money, but this is considerably over our 1% threshold.
And I think whereas, you know, emotionally, it may at certain points seem a thing to do, and where sometimes a dollar amount may not seem that far apart, I think the one thing that we have to be aware of, how does this begin to erode the process of the bidding? The issues that the Vice Mayor brought up about potential retribution or consideration by non-area vendors to even bother with a bid, and how it erodes our existing policy at the 1%. We start doing these things on the fly, and it becomes rather, you know, unwieldy and rather arbitrary, so I'm not in support of going beyond the recommendation for the low bidders myself. So where does that leave us?
That's where I was going to add.
I'd like, can I remove the Great Lakes and vote on just the Benton? I don't know.
With consent of the second.
Who supported it? Was it you, sir?
Oh, yes, you may.
Thank you.
Okay, so then we have what?
The motion for the Chevrolet from Benton.
The Chevy from Benton, yeah.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Turnquist and seconded by Commissioner Wieringo to make the purchase of the Chevy Malibu, correct? From Benton Chevrolet. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
We're purchasing.
I didn't hear.
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
No.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
No.
Motion passes.
So now we need a motion to buy a Ford Fusion.
Your Honor, if I may, I would move that we purchase the Ford Fusion from Gornow Ford, which is the lowest responsible bidder.
I need a second. Support. It has been moved by the Vice Mayor and seconded by Commissioner Markowski to purchase one Ford Fusion from Gornow Ford, the responsible low bidder. Any discussion?
Excuse me, yeah, where is Gornow Ford located at?
Woodhaven.
Wyandotte, Downriver on the east side of the state.
We didn't get a bid.
Have we done business with them before?
Yes, we have, I think. Anything else? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Wieringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. May have new business, please.
Approval of sale of city-owned home at 134 East Isabella, Community Neighborhood Services, summary request. To approve the resolution and instruct the Community Neighborhood Services Department to complete the sales transaction between Michael D. Kelly for the Neighborhood Stabilization Program rehabilitated home at 134 East Isabella. Mr. Kelly will purchase it for $27,000. Staff recommendation, to approve the resolution and direct the CNS staff to complete the sale.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I do have Michael Kelly here to meet you. Michael, would you stand?
Hi.
He's a young man who wishes to purchase our house that has sat empty for almost three years.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, we completed it in 2010, and not for lack of beauty, because it is a beautiful little house, but it is a small home, a two-bedroom, one-bath, so not a lot of families were looking at our home. Actually, no one came to look at our house during the open houses, but Michael has chosen to purchase it for $27,000.
Well, let's get the show on the road. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move that we approve the sale of city-owned home at 134 East Isabella to Mr. Kelly.
Okay.
Second.
It has been moved by the Vice Mayor and seconded by Commissioner German to approve the sale of the city-owned home at 134 East Isabella to Mr. Michael D. Kelly. Any discussion?
Welcome.
Welcome.
We're delighted.
We are. Much luck and blessings to you, sir.
Thanks, sir. Probably set a vote on it.
Yeah. That's the next thing. Hey, how about a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringo?
Yes.
Good congratulations.
Great bulk of the neighborhood.
Nice.
Next.
Approval of sale of city-owned home at 605 Jackson, Community Neighborhood Services, summary request. To approve the resolution and instruct the Community Neighborhood Services Department to complete the sales transaction between Laquandra Robinson for the newly constructed home at 605 Jackson, which is part of the city's Neighborhood Stabilization Program through the Michigan State Housing Development Authority Office of Community Development and Leverage Funds with the home programmed by Hutt. Staff recommendation, to approve the resolution and direct the CNS staff to complete the sale.
And unfortunately, we didn't put the price on this agenda item, but it is for the same amount, $65,000, is what we're selling it for. Our realtor is here tonight, Kay Pittman from Green Ridge Realty, and they've done a great job this past year. Kay, would you stand? And Laquandra's realtor is here, Carrie Eppard, and she is from Platinum Realty Group. And last but not least, the buyer, who is very anxious to purchase this home, Laquandra Robinson.
Very good. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I drive by this area for work-related purposes on a regular basis, so not only has it been fun to watch this new house go up, but it's exciting to see it going to be occupied, and so I would be delighted to move that we sell the house at, I'm sure I get the right address here, at 605 Jackson to Mrs. Robinson.
Second. It has been moved by the Vice Mayor and seconded by.
Who wants it?
Okay. Commissioner Hood to sell the city-owned home at 605 Jackson to Ms. Laquandra Robinson. Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good, and best wishes to you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Item C, please.
Amendment to the Renaissance Zone Development Agreement for High Points Flat Planning Economic Development, summary request. Request to amend the Renaissance Zone Development Agreement for the High Point Flats apartment project at 285 West Western Avenue to extend the deadline for the private investment minimums until December 31 of 2015. Staff recommendation, to approve Renaissance Zone Development Agreement Amendment.
Move, I move to approve the Renaissance Zone Development Agreement Amendment.
Support. It has been moved by Commissioner Hood, seconded by Commissioner Turnquist, to amend the Renaissance Zone Development Agreement for High Point Flats at 285 West Western Avenue. Any discussion?
Can we ask why it was?
The property of the year?
Yes.
Mike's here, too.
Oh, there's Mike.
Hello, evening. We initially had an agreement that the deadline was this year for development, but with the recession hitting, obviously it stalled the project. The developer does, did receive a grant from the state of Michigan, and he's looking to close on that grant documents within the next couple of months, so we feel it would be necessary to extend the deadline.
Any other questions or comments? Not roll call, please.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item D, please.
Permanent Traffic Control Orders, Public Works, summary request. Authorize staff to remove the current traffic signals per Traffic Controls Orders 4 through 8 and remove on-street parking on Muskegon Avenue between Jefferson and Terrace Streets and install permanent stop signs on the various adjoining cross streets. Staff recommendation, approve the request.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. At least so we can begin discussion, I would move that we approve the requests for the permanent traffic control orders.
Second.
It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner German, to authorize staff to remove the current traffic signals per Traffic Control Order Number 4-8. Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Well, I've been thinking about this, and, I mean, I've certainly heard from a number of neighbors, but even before I talked to them, I think it's, there's only three of us here who were kind of here when these decisions were made, I mean, Commissioner Wieringo and the mayor and myself, and I think it's appropriate to just kind of refresh everybody's memory that we had actually voted 6 to 1 to eliminate the one-way streets in Muskegon with the exception of Commerce because of the building that's right there. And we've gotten about half of them done, and part of the justification was to slow traffic down to improve safety, and in regards to Muskegon and Webster, there were two key issues there. One, we know through traffic research that's been ongoing for decades now that you got to get the traffic to 3 miles an hour or slower for your businesses to benefit. If traffic's going too fast, it doesn't matter how many cars there are, they don't stop. The other thing is, and it's kind of interesting, this kind of came up in some of the farmers' market meetings, there's no doubt that in the 1950s, when the route of Seaway Drive through downtown Muskegon was picked, that deliberately or not, it in effect created a physical barrier between the majority of the residential neighborhood and the business district. There's not much of a more effective barrier other than a fence than eight lanes of high-speed traffic going through the middle of downtown. The turnback has been successful on two counts. It slowed the traffic down, and I think in a real sense, at least until we can physically rebuild the streets and put them more into a normal footprint, like I would think Clay Avenue would be a model for people to kind of have in mind what we're talking about, but a normal footprint, it has in many ways achieved both the goals we set out for, to help knit the neighborhood back together and knit the neighborhood back together with the business district and slow that traffic down. So the removal of these traffic control devices potentially could be a step backwards. So as I was thinking about that, one of the things that speeds traffic up is you never have to stop. One of the things that we did in order to do this turnback and in order to anticipate any outcome, we didn't know how this was going to turn out, is we have left turn lanes on both these streets. Now, there's not any left turn lanes on Houston, and there's not any left turn lanes on Clay, and they seem to function pretty well. So I would suggest that if we move to remove these stoplights, and remember, the study said by traffic volume alone, we can't justify any of these traffic lights. So it seems to me if we can't justify the traffic lights, the left turn lanes are redundant. So I would suggest that if we vote to remove these, we also direct staff that this spring, when it comes time to paint the lines, is to take the left turn lanes out, at least for that area between 4th and 9th, which is entirely residential in nature, and quite frankly, except for Terrace Street, I'm not sure that they're needed. The other thing is, is I think we need to take a long, hard look at the light at Spring and Muskegon, because, I don't know about you guys, but I normally go north on Spring because there's only the one traffic light, and south on Pine because you can turn left on Apple so I can get back to the office because there's a traffic light there. Well, so the last few, since we've had this discussion, I've been going it the other way, and when you're at the top of that hill on Spring Street, heading. I don't know about you guys, but I normally go north on Spring because there's only the one traffic light and south on Pine because you can turn left on Apple so I can get back to the office because there's a traffic light there. Well, so the last few, since we've had this discussion, I've been going it the other way. And when you're at the top of that hill on Spring Street heading south, there really is kind of a double dip hill there, and anything smaller than a panel truck, you kind of lose. And I'm wondering if it's not a safety hazard not to have either a stop sign there or keep that traffic signal there. So anyway, that's, I just wanted to get that out there. I think, I think if we can't justify the traffic lights, we can justify doing some other traffic calming measures like, at a minimum, eliminate the left turn lane, which would allow us to add some additional on-street parking, and until we get the streets physically into a configuration like Clay, perhaps adding a bike lane at some point. So anyway, I just wanted to share that. I know there's quite a bit of concern that if we just remove the lights and take no additional action, that we'll create a drag strip between 4th where the traffic lights are and 9th Street where Seaway Drive begins.
So looking at continued ways to continue the softening of the traffic.
Mm-hmm. So that's...
Commissioner Markowski?
Thank you.
For starters, I am, would be very excited to move towards bike lanes. I think that our city is one that certainly has much access to recreational uses of bikes, but we need to encourage folks to be able to use them in more of a commuter method. It's a very reasonable means of transportation, and I don't think that Muskegon is very good at that. And I don't think our residents are very well-trained to watch out for bikes, motorcycles, or, you know, those who don't have a motor. And I think that if we can move towards that, we'll all be better off. In addition, the crossing at 7th Street, my concern on removing everything moving north-south on that light would be that if you are crossing either of those streets, not in a vehicle, and you have such a width of road, essentially, if it is a busy time, what you're stuck doing is, okay, everybody, let's go now.
Crossing a lane.
Because there is, there is nothing to hold the cars to be on the lookout for pedestrians. It's very close to a school, it's very close to a lot of elderly residences, and I do think that we need to make it easier for people to make the gap between the residences and our downtown. We want to encourage that walkability. And I think by removing everything at the main travelways to downtown from our neighborhoods, we're not encouraging that behavior. So that is one intersection I think we need to take a look at, whether it's a four-way stop at least for now, and maybe see how that goes. I think that requires cars to stop, but then if there is no traffic, you can continue on your way, you're not held up, as long as you would be for a light. And I agree on Spring Street, I was coming up that hill today, and you really can't see very well over that hill. I find that to be a safety hazard.
Any other comments? Commissioner German?
Looking at the Spring Street, excuse me, and Muskegon Avenue, I've been up and down that street several times, several years, and coming up that hill, there is a issue of having a blind spot with traffic coming north of Muskegon. So I'm in agreements with the Vice Mayor and also Commissioner Markowski, putting some type of four-way stop there or either keeping that traffic signal there as well.
Okay. Right now, let's keep our mind on the current proposal, especially as it affects the lights that we already have been discussing. Right now, I will allow, Terry McAllister, you're an interested party, and you've requested, are you representing a recognized organization, correct? Okay. If you would please, your name, address, and your organization, and you want to speak on this issue.
My name is Terry McAllister. I live at 458 West Webster, and I'm representing a committee of the Nelson Neighborhood Improvement Association, which deals with issues facing the historic district and how that historic district interfaces with the whole of the Nelson neighborhood. I need to be clear on this request. Is the Traffic Control Orders Number 4 and 8 dealing with the removal of other, of the other streetlights that have been proposed on Webster and Muskegon, or does this just deal with the one at Spring Street?
No.
Yes, it does deal with multiple lights.
With all of them. Then, from the Nelson Neighborhood Improvement Association's standpoint, we feel that there are some major issues facing the neighborhood with the removal of these stoplights, especially at Muskegon and 7th, or Muskegon and Webster as 7th. If those lights are, if that light is removed and we only have stop signs on the cross street, we are taking a huge step backwards in terms of the amount of traffic and how quickly you will be moving traffic along Webster and Muskegon. From 4th Street on, it will become a drag strip. Now, I concur with, with Vice Mayor Spataro that, yes, in fact, in the long term, these streets do have to be, there is additional work that needs to be done to soften and to, to slow down traffic, but that's going to cost money and other construction, and we're worried about now, right now. The committee from NNI would like to recommend that you table the decisions on those, on everything from 4th to 9th, because that in fact is the neighborhood. Ideally, I would like to see it from 2nd or 1st to 9th. And we would like you to table this so that you can meet with the neighborhood committee, which has been established, and see if we can come up with, with some other alternatives to just simply putting in, if, as I understand it, two-way, two-way stops on the cross streets. In the short term, four-way stops, I think, are critical, but if the state in its inimitable wisdom does not allow us to do that, we have some other alternatives that we would like to share. I would sooner do that with staff than have to hassle it out in public, in a, in a public commission meeting. However, if you won't table it, then I do have some other comments and some additional, and, and a method whereby I think we can accommodate the neighborhood.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. And I know he's always in the back smiling saying, please don't call on me, but I don't know if our Director of Public Works would be available to answer this question, or perhaps we need to take some time on this, but if we remove the left turn lane on either side of 7th Street on Muskegon and Webster, that would free up additional room for on-street parking. Now, just so everybody in the audience is clear, the study showed we can't justify any of the 17 traffic lights we looked at based on traffic. We were allowed to retain, and for some bizarre reason, we can't do four-way stops. I don't understand it. I won't pretend to try to explain why they think that makes sense. But we were able to retain 12 of those lights because it would have required the removal of on-street parking. So I'm wondering, on 7th Street, if we remove the left turn lane and add on-street parking, if that might give us justification for retaining those traffic lights?
Who knows, huh?
You want the answer, Vice Mayor?
Well, if he has it, otherwise, you know, we can always go back and do the necessary research and find out.
Good evening. Yes, the answer is we would have to have some type of traffic controls because of the side distance will be obscured, if you will, especially if you add it on the northerly side of Muskegon Avenue between 7th and 6th, 6th Street.
So if we decided to remove those left turn lanes and add the on-street parking, we could, at least in the short term, justify retaining those traffic lights. Am I understanding that correctly, Don?
Well, I, I think...
At least those two on 7th.
Yeah, I think, I just need to make sure that we're on the same page as far as, you know, the studies show that those signals that you made reference to did not meet the wants. Nobody is forcing us to do any, no outside agency, just to make sure that we're all on the same page, no outside agency is forcing us to do anything. We took, as, based on complaints that we got, we figured instead of having to deal with signals, I mean, we've got quite a, quite a few complaints in the engineering office and different places about the lack of progress or progression, if you will, on those, and the stop-go, and there's no, there are no traffics. So we initiated the traffic study that we came before you requesting permission last year, I believe.
Right.
And all we did is, all that study did is evaluate those traffic signals based on the Michigan Manual of Uniform Traffic Control, and it came back and said none of those signals are warranted, if you will, except for those that we wanted to take some science, but the state did not, nor are they asking us to remove or keep them. The state is not doing any of that stuff. So we can choose to keep them, is what I'm saying, if that's the desire right here.
Do I understand correctly that the requirements for a four-way stop are the same as for the traffic signal, so that in any of these instances where they to be replaced with a four-way stop, the requirements would be no different?
Pretty much the same.
I just want to clarify that. Personally, I feel that stoplight, I'm sorry, stop signs have a much more residential feel to them. They give you the opportunity to check both ways and then progress, and they can eliminate the issue of waiting for no traffic while still providing for you to be aware of your surroundings and check for pedestrians.
Do you mind if I just...
Please.
Maybe I should just quit while, maybe I'm even not ahead. But I think what we have, you know, with the stop signs, and I agree with you that it gives the feeling of residential street, if you will, or residential neighborhood. But I think you mentioned just a minute ago or earlier about the kids in school, and I agree with you, the neighborhood, but I think we all have to keep in mind, I'm just, and I, if I may just read this sentence here, I just got it this afternoon from the engineer that says URS does not and cannot recommend installing four-way stop signs as they are not warranted. The city can erect a four-way stop if they choose, but the city opens itself to potential liability, blah, 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 later on. The biggest fear with stop signs, unwarranted stop signs, is people have the tendency to lose sight of its need and they have to stop. So what you're going to end up with, a behavior where individuals, they come in there, they start looking at the side streets with their peripheral vision without, without really looking ahead of them, anticipating what the side street traffic is doing, and then all of a sudden you find them just itching in and itching in. I don't know about the police department, but I can tell you there's quite a few times that I come into town on Muskegon Avenue at 9th Street where we had the four-way stop signs, and I can almost guarantee you not a single vehicle that I ever see come to a complete stop. And if you have school in that area, and then that's the last thing you want, somebody going into the intersection because they don't feel that the stop sign is warranted or there's no traffic and they're not paying attention to what you might have in the middle of the street. But that's my two cents, and I'm sorry. Exactly.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I, you know, I've seen enough of the research on unwarranted stop signs, and what he means that we're liable, if somebody has an accident there and there's an unwarranted traffic control device, then the city's opened up itself to being sued, saying that the inappropriately placed traffic control device contributed to the accident. That can get kind of expensive. So, correct me if I'm wrong there, Corps of Counsel. So I, I think we need to find solutions that meet the state warrants but maintain the traffic calming that we're looking for. And, and I can't help but say, a lot of this stuff is driven by folks going through town, and not enough attention is paid to those of us who actually live in the downtown neighborhoods. And when you're going north or south, it's murder. And of course, there's no cross traffic because it's so engineered against you that half the time you end up going down the terrace just because those lights are reasonable to get through. Jefferson's a nightmare. If you're going north on Jefferson, you're going to wait at City Hall, and you used to have to wait there on Apple, but the state finally took that one off. You got to wait there for God knows how long, it's what, a two-minute light it seems like, and then you never can hit the other one at Green. And yet, that used to be a primary access point to the business district. It hurts our businesses. And yet, there's no consideration with the timing that, I mean, the sequence of the lights about the traffic from the neighborhood into the business district and back again into the neighborhood. All the concern with all these studies is all about, how can I get from 9th to Spring as quickly as possible without stopping? And, you know, we have to have some balance here. We have to knit our downtown back together if it's going to be healthy and revive. And so, you know, when we talk about these things, I don't want to lose sight of that, because we have issues at 2nd, we have issues at Jefferson, 3rd and 4th aren't quite as bad, but they could be better. But, you know, we need to give equal weight to the folks who live in Nelson and McLaughlin and Angel who are trying to get north into the business district, as much as we are folks who live in Jackson Hill or NIMs or further points west or further points east who are going on Muskegon and Webster to get through town. So that's just the frustration mine has been for a long time, and I, I just wanted to say that. I, I think quite honestly that there's enough here that perhaps putting this on our agenda for our next work session might be appropriate, to hear the ideas from the neighborhood, to come up with a solution that fits the state mandated warrants, which we know we have to comply with and, and retain the traffic calming that we've, we've achieved. I don't want to call, cut off any discussion, but unless there's other discussion, at that point, I would be willing to make a motion to table until our next work session. This shouldn't be the next work session.
Right, yeah. It wouldn't be the next work session with our, a full agenda that is developing.
Well, two, every month and a half, whatever, that's all right.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I agree.
Commissioner Markowski?
Just real quick, when I mentioned kids coming from school, I just wanted to be clear that it's not simply a matter of children deciding to go from the school area into downtown, but that is a walkway for students from Nelson Elementary to go downtown for field trips. The ability of those kids to go downtown because they are so close to that area, to the Hackley and Hume Home, to the museum, to the Y on occasion, by foot, because we are strapped for busing in our areas, that is a way that they take. And you might be able to get a couple of kids across those streets, okay, quick, let's go, but an entire classroom with nothing to stop traffic, I think it's just not acceptable.
Right.
Any other comments?
Are you going to make the amendment?
Yeah, I would make a motion, and, yeah, I forgot, we do have a full agenda in April, so I would move that we table action on this item, pending discussion on our work session in May.
Second.
Second?
Would the neighborhood organization have an opportunity then to meet with staff before that work session?
I'm sure they're open to listening to the...
And how would we go about doing that?
Call Brian.
Well, I think you should take action on this motion that you have on the floor without discussion.
Okay, and then we'll do a direction.
Discussion.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquess?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galron?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Now we can direct staff.
Five jumping jacks.
Please.
And Terry Mayor may agree or disagree, but perhaps it'd be a good idea for the commission to have some discussion at their May work session about this whole issue, and I'm kind of hearing different schools of thought, and then it gives us maybe a little bit better flavor about what you're thinking to go into a discussion with the neighborhood association as staff.
And may I request that we ask for any suggestions or ideas from the residents, as always, that they're always welcome to suggest things that they may come across as a problem.
Absolutely, but I mean... Absolutely, but, I mean, we're, I'm hoping that that's coming-
Loud and clear.
From the Neighborhood Association. I mean, Terry and his folks are representing the neighborhood.
Right, and I, and I think it would behoove us to have the police chief in, in concert with these meetings. I get a little skeptical when decisions are totally based on the recommendation of engineers whose primary focus is from curb to curb and doesn't take into consideration the impact that it may have on the neighborhood. So, I think that, I would ask that Chief Lewis be-
Part of it.
Be a part of that as well.
We will have a full and open and concise discussion.
So, the game plan is you will have a service meeting in May-
And they will meet for our work session-
It's the second Thursday?
On the thirteenth of May, and this will be a topic on there, and we will move forward from there.
Then, will it be voted on, on the next, on the fourteenth?
No.
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 Okay, so we have-
This will be our starting point to hash this out and get a clearer reading on how to proceed.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item E, please.
SS Milwaukee Clipper Letter of Support Planning Economic Development. Summary request: The SS Milwaukee Clipper Preservation Incorporated Board is seeking approval from the County of Muskegon to relocate to a permanent location at Heritage Landing. The board is requesting a letter of support from the city of Muskegon. Staff recommendation: To authorize the mayor to send a letter of support to the SS Milwaukee Clipper Preservation Incorporated Board to relocate to Heritage Landing, providing a suitable location is identified.
I move to authorize the mayor to send a letter of support to the SS Milwaukee Clipper Preservation, Preservation Board to relocate Heritage to Heritage Landing, provided a suitable location is identified.
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner Hood and seconded by Vice Mayor Spataro to authorize me to send a letter of support to the SS Milwaukee Clipper Preservation Incorporated Board relocate to Heritage Landing, providing a suitable location, uh, providing a suitable location is identified. Any discussion, Vice Mayor?
Just one observation, um, I mean, there's not too many options from the Clipper at this point, and this does give them flexibility. We don't specify where on Heritage Landing, but I do want to go on record as saying, hopefully, a deal could be worked out for the east side of the peninsula, which would put it between Heritage Landing and Mifarge, which I think would obstruct the least amount of water view. And, you know, we've worked very hard over the years to create public space on the water, and it's a nice boat, and I admire the folks who've put their sweat equity into turning it into uh, an asset to this community, but people still want to see blue, so, thanks.
I didn't really consider the east side of that peninsula. I wasn't sure if that was available, but I would concur that that would be my preference. I realize that we're not specifying that, but, um, Heritage Landing is one of the few things on our, our lake shore that we all enjoy at some point or another, and I, I certainly would not want to hamper that view, but would like to encourage for preservation as much as we can.
Any others? Roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galron?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. You can mail it, I already signed it. Item F, please.
Proclamation School Spirit. City Clerk, summary request: The city commission has directed staff to draft a proclamation encouraging citizens to wear school colors the first day of each month to show support of our area's schools. Staff recommendation: To approve the proclamation.
Commissioner Markowski?
I would move that we approve the proclamation of School Spirit for the city of Muskegon.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Markowski and seconded by Vice Mayor Spataro to approve the proclamation proclaiming School Spirit in the city of Muskegon. Any discussion? Commissioner?
We, we can do a proclamation, but how are we gonna support this? You know, what school colors are we talking? Just the city of Muskegon? And it says, uh, high school colors, which would be the Muskegon Big Reds. But there are other schools throughout Muskegon that have colors too.
Well, this is in the city, within the city of Muskegon.
Within the city.
Within the city.
Of all schools?
Right, so, you got-
It just says school color.
So, I, I still ask-
We got the Big Reds.
It's easy to write the proclamation, but what are we gonna put behind it to see that the people are aware of it?
Well, we're not gonna send out Chief Lewis. But- We put out our goodwill and we get this promoted as we can. Commissioner Hood?
Yes, my only thing is, um, at the high school, you have, um, a combination of shit I don't think that has settled yet with Muskegon Heights students coming over there, and you have the Big Red colors, 'cause I know at the football games you had, um, parents wearing Muskegon Heights colors, and it was, trying to think if it was Muskegon, what is it, um, Muskegon Tigers or something like that? Um, so, yeah, the conflict there, that was my only concern with this.
Can I explain?
Please.
Um, I just want to explain my purpose behind, um, suggesting this. Um, for starters, I realize that we have, um, had quite a bit of, of issue in our neighborhoods with our youth, um, in the past couple of years, and we're really trying to find ways as a community to show that we are behind them, that we realize there are struggles in our schools, but that we as a community, whether you have children in any district or not, uh, we need to recognize that our kids are in school and that they need to be supported in that process. So, my suggestion was simply to request that not only, um, staff members within the city of Muskegon, but that any businesses or interested residents be encouraged to participate, to show their school pride, whichever school that is. Now, I realize that we've had some, um, some merging of our own schools, so we have, um, within the Muskegon District, which is, you know, not directly affiliated with the city, but the one that covers the most area within the city, um, they've gone through changes, they've merged, and they have made it so that they have all one logo and set of colors throughout their district. So, in support of those changes, I wanted to encourage residents to visibly promote that we are behind our kids. Now, whether your kids attend, um, Muskegon Public, whether they attend the Christian Schools, one of the charter schools, to me, that doesn't matter. And, and whether you maybe support a school that's outside of our district, I don't care. I just want people to be comfortable visibly supporting our kids in a manner that doesn't hurt anyone and that is, um, encouraging. And I realize that we have some, um, some turf wars going on between certain students, but I think that the Heights is doing the same. They want to build their pride, and we want to support them as well. You know, we are all in this together, and, um, I think that when you come into the city of Muskegon, it needs to be clear that we are all here for our kids. There are other, um, cities that you go into, you walk in, and you know that you're in a district by visible signs and colors, um, on buildings or other areas. So, I think the simple thing that we can do is to wear clothing that supports our schools when possible. It doesn't cost much money. You don't even have to wear a logo. You can wear red or green or whichever color suits you, but, um, I think it's a simple thing we can do simply to show our pride.
Show our spirit. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galron?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
No.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item G, please.
Concurrent for the Housing Board of Appeals Notice in Order to Demolish the Following Public Safety, 390 Catherine, Area 11, 1200 Ambrosia, Area 11, 1284 Pine, Area 11, 1458 Gyrock, Area 13. Summary request: This is to request the city commission concur with the findings of the Housing Board of Appeals that the structures are unsafe, substandard, a public nuisance, and that they be demolished within 30 days. It is further requested that administration be directed to obtain bids for the demolition of the structures and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized and directed to execute a contract for demolition with the lowest responsible bidder. Staff recommendation: To concur with the Housing Board of Appeals' decision to demolish.
Commissioner Hood?
Excuse me, Commissioner German there.
Yeah, Commissioner German?
Uh, I move that we concur with the Housing Board of Appeals Notice in order to demolish the following properties. Uh, do you need me to state those? Okay.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner German and seconded by the Vice Mayor to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals Notice in order to demolish the following, 390 Catherine, Area 11, 1200 Ambrosia, Area 11, 1284 Pine, Area 11, and 1458 Gyrock, Area 13. Is there anyone in the audience to speak in any one of these, uh, properties? Not roll call, please.
Can I ask a question?
You may.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Uh, every one of these owners have been sent registered letters-
Yes.
And they've come back not received.
Yes.
Uh, I would assume that no taxes have been paid on these properties during this time? And once the house goes down, who owns that property? Does it come to the city, or what happens to it?
Yeah. Do you want to answer, or?
Sure. If in fact there's, uh, taxes owed after three years of being unpaid, the county will foreclose on the taxes and the property will revert to the county. Then, there's a process that it's available for us or other entities or public auction.
But until that occurs, the property owner still owns the property.
Still owns it. Still owns the property, right. When the property is raised, uh, we leave it in a flat piece of ground? Do we plant seed? Do we make it, uh, uh, you know? Might look like a house blew up there, but it looks-
We, the, we remove everything, um, and the house and, uh, the, if there's any, uh, foundation, we remove that as well, and we backfill it. Um, usually, we seed it, um, but it's not like your lawn.
But, but the neighbors aren't gonna be offended with what's left there. They're probably more offended with the houses.
No, the neighbors will be tickled pink because the house is gone. Any other questions or comments? Not roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski? Yes.
Mayor Galron?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Thank you. Item H, please.
Liquor license renewal, Dreamers 978 Pine.
Guess you're up, Ken.
I have the owner, uh, opportunities here. He brought in paperwork today, um, stating that he was gonna get on some type of payment plan. Well, he already has got a payment plan with the, with the county. He has paid all his back personal property taxes with the city. So, um, as of today, he owes eighty, or a little more than eighty-five hundred dollars, and he's gonna pay, have a payment plan with the county.
Yes, okay, excuse me. My name is Malachi Williams, and, uh, as Mr. Ken's mentioned, I had paid up, uh, those rear taxes, not all of them, as he stated. However, I want to say that, um, I am trying to pay the taxes. I am going to pay the taxes because I had the business in the city now for ten years, and I think it's been a plus for the city, and so I want the committee to, uh, work with me, give me extension so that I can, uh, continue to do what I'm trying to do.
And you're on board?
Yes, I'm on board, yes. I recommend that he continues and remains in business and keep his liquor license.
Ken, what specific, uh, action does the city commission need to take? Just remove them from the, uh, resolution?
Yes, just remove them from the resolutions. And it's only, I think it's only one business left, just that some, I don't know, it's one business.
Yes.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Vice Mayor, I would move that we remove, uh, Dreamers 978 Pine from the resolution, uh, being sent to the state regarding non-renewal of liquor licenses.
Second. It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner German to remove Dreamers 978 Pine from the resolution sent to the state of Michigan regarding non-renewal of liquor license. Any discussion?
Just one comment. Um, you know, me in particular, because apparently I hated a particular local establishment and personally killed it. Um, I want to remind everybody, we gave them several years, and instead of catching up, they just got further and further behind. Um, you know, this owner's operated this business successfully for a decade. Uh, there were some issues initially, and unlike other operators, he took those things seriously, took some entering from the previous mayor, and has turned that into a tremendous asset to our downtown. Um, so, I, I think this is a very different situation than what we were facing this time last year. And I have no doubt that, uh, this will get cleaned up, and we won't, uh, won't see you again on this type of issue, uh, in the future. So, I'd be happy to support this request.
Very good. Commissioner Markowski?
Um, I just wanted to state that I'm not sure if, um, everyone here is aware of the, the business, but that Mr. Williams has, um, assisted with the beautification of our downtown very recently with, um, a mural on his property. I think that really, um, adds to the value of that neighborhood, um, and I think that people appreciate that. It might not seem relevant, but, um, hopefully, he's able to turn this around because I think that his establishment is very valued, um, by a segment of our community, and I hope that we can keep it there.
Thank you. Any other comments?
One more then.
Yes.
I'd like to extend, um, invitation to also Mr. Williams. Uh, I know him personally and, um, as a businessman also, and, uh, what he's doing as a business owner. I just, like I said, I commend what you're doing and support also, um, giving you, uh, a chance to, uh, resolve this issue, so. And thank you what you bring to the community with your business.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? Not roll call, please.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galron?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Good luck, Mr. Williams.
Thank you very much.
Under any other business, we have a resolution regarding authorizing S2 grant agreement.
Yeah, I, I think I can, um, jump in here if you don't mind. Uh, at the last city commission meeting, you approved, um, applying for this grant. Um, however, um, just before the commission meeting tonight, uh, we received, uh, this resolution that needs to, um, needs your authorization to, uh, execute. So, we ask you to, um, or we are asking you to approve this resolution, um, but you've already approved the, uh, the project, if you will.
Right.
So, it's really more of a formality.
I get a motion to authorize the resolution authorizing the S2 grant agreement.
So, move?
Looking for a sec, okay. Uh, Commissioner, it's been moved by Commissioner Markowski, seconded by Commissioner Waringo to authorize the resolution for the S2 grant agreement. Any discussion? None, roll call, please.
Mayor Galron?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other business from the commission? Is there any public comment that anyone would like to give? Bash, please.
Joshua Eldon Brady, 1336 Spring Street in the McLaughlin Neighborhood. Um, thank you for tabling the issue on the traffic lights. I just wanted to add another note. Coming south on Seaway, there's a sign, I don't remember the exact wording, um, shortly after coming off of the Causeway, that says, "Farm market traffic, turn left on Spring." When you turn left on Spring, you go up one of the steepest hills on any road we have in this city. I won't even drive that in the winter. It's so steep if there's water or ice on the road. I don't want to have to stop and slide backwards down the hill. My concern is, it is also a visibility problem because of how steep it is, and that's one of the traffic lights that's, lights that's been recommended for removal is Spring in Muskegon. I realize the volume of traffic doesn't justify a light or a four-way stop, but please, in your discussions, um, of what you've tabled, as you go through that, please consider whether or not the unique geography and the effect on sightlines and starting distance, um, particularly for those driving stick shift, trying not to roll backwards down that hill, um, may justify something that would not otherwise be justified by traffic. I also wanted to mention one other thing kind of connected to the whole updating- I also wanted to mention one other thing, kind of connected to the whole updating signals. About a month ago, I was at Tom Pastor's house for a Neighborhood Association Committee meeting. Four o'clock meeting, got there a couple of minutes early, and realized I still can't park on the street outside of his house. McLaughlin Elementary School was closed eight, nine months ago now. And we still have no parking 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. signs all the way along that street. And the school district has made it explicitly clear they will not let that building ever be used for parochial or charter school. And as much as we might want to hope and dream our neighborhood school might open again, realistically, it's not happening. So can we please look, both there and at any of the other schools that are closed, at updating traffic signals and parking rules? Because visitors to the folks who live across the street should be able to park there. There's no good reason not to anymore. Thank you.
Thanks, Joshua. Is there any other member of the public that would like to address the commission? Going once, going twice. Commissioner Hood?
If there's nothing else, I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. I got some cold pizza to go home and eat.
You got what?
Cold pizza.